Are you ready?
Recording in progress.
Good morning, everyone. We will go ahead and get started. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the table outside as well as on our website. There is also an automatic external defibrillator that is available on the back wall of our legislative chambers. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On behalf of the board, this is our first meeting. I wish you all Happy New Year, and I'm going to turn it over at this time to our clerk to get started with our election of the Chair for the ensuing year.
All right. Good morning, Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. So like Commissioner Borgeson said, the first item is Item A, election of the Chair of the Board of Commissioners for the ensuing year. Do I have any nominations for the Chairperson?
I'd nominate Commissioner Borgeson.
Commissioner Boyle nominates Commissioner Borgeson. All right, and Commissioner Morgan seconds. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay, seeing none. I guess we'll do a vote here for Commissioner Borgeson. Give me one moment, please. I better hurry up or Commissioner Friend does something.
Yeah.
Let's go sixteen so we beat them.
Okay, Commissioners, please vote. Motion passes, seven to zero. Congratulations, Chair Borgeson.
Thank you very much, and I thank the board for your support of me, and I look forward to working with each and every one of you as we pursue our agenda for next year. So thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the election for Vice Chair of the Board of Commissioners for this ensuing year. Is there a, any nominations for Vice Chair?
Nate, Commissioner Chris Rogers is Vice Chair of the Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Any other nominations for Vice? Any other nominations for Vice Chair? I will close nominations. Please vote.
Moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Commissioner Rogers abstaining. Other Commissioners voting yes.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
You're much more formal than I. Congratulations. All right, we will have a recess, motion to recess out of the Board of Commissioners at this juncture and enter into the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, or Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Boyle. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please.
You ready?
Yes. Are those on Zoom? Could you please mute?
Chair Borgeson, I apologize. Who made the motion and second on that?
Commissioner Rogers made the motion. Commissioner Boyle made the second.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Rogers. Motion passes, seven to zero.
We will begin with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle?
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh? Commissioner Friend?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Morgan?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, December 20th, 2022, and call for a meeting set Tuesday, January 24th, 2023, as a date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Please note on the agenda that there was a typo for the date. It should say 2023 rather than 2022. Is there a motion to approve A and B? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Next, or Citizen Comments, is there anyone in the chamber wishing to speak to the Board of Equalization about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to our resolutions. We have Resolutions D through I. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan.
Commissioners, may I?
Any question? I'm sorry.
Commissioners, may I?
Yes.
Mike Goodwillie, Douglas County, Assessor, Register of Deeds Office. I know there are two items among our resolutions where there are people here who are going to want to speak. So I guess I didn't want you to get so far down the track. You-
For the resolutions or the protests?
Well, there's Resolution D, which is the denial of a 2022 permissive exemption application. And there's somebody here from the organization that wants to speak. So I didn't want you to get so far down the track. And let me synopsize that one for you. This is Cathedral of Love Church of God at 28th and Ames. They had been exempt, and despite the reminder letters that we sent, did not file an application for 2022. To refresh your recollection on the process, there would have been a reminder sent in November and December of '21, another one in March, and then another one in June of 2022. And they all went to the address that the organization had given us on their previous application. When we heard nothing, we do what is required by state law, and that is we went to put a value on the property. We ran it through the county board, through the certified assessment correction process, and that value was approved in December of 2022. Notice was sent to the organization, incidentally, at the same address that the reminder letters to get them to file their exemption application went. That one they got. And so they then filed a '22 exemption application on December 19th of this year. Because it was out of time, we recommended denial. And that's the the item we're talking about today. And I know there's a gentleman here from the organization that would probably like to speak. What puts a little wrinkle on this is it's my understanding that the property is being sold, and that one of the issues involving the sale is the taxes that were added because of the value due to the failure to file an exemption application. So anyway, I'll let the gentleman from Cathedral of Love address you.
Thank you. Could that gentleman come forward, please? Good morning. And just state your name for us.
My name is Pastor Robert J. Hall.
Good morning. And just tell us what you're-
I have a-
Could you tell us what you're here for today? Could you tell us what you're here for today?
Yes. The gentleman is correct in terms of we missed filing the application for Cathedral of Love. This is the first time in, we've been there for 27 years, and this is the first time this has occurred. We've lost our exemption. I had a secretary that normally takes care of this, and I signed it after she completed the form. She's no longer with me. And I wasn't diligent enough to stay on top of completing this application. I did the 457 for the church's van, and I did the state forms, but I missed the ball on this one. We have mail coming to the church. We had a P.O. box that we changed that. And when she left, then we changed the address to come to my home. And so between my home and the mail coming to the church, I missed it. I don't have a legitimate excuse. I just missed it. We are in the process of selling the church. It's due to close this month. But one of the sticklers is the taxes that have to be paid. So that's the only excuse that I have.
You're selling the property. Are you selling it to another church?
No, to a medical group that is moving into the Omaha community.
So could I ask Mr. Goodwillie to come back up for a minute? And before you, before you leave, Mr. Hall, what's the timeline of that sale?
When, when do you think you're going to sell?
The sale is scheduled for this week. It was to be last week, but they asked for another week to complete some of their paperwork.
Okay, thank you. So you said that this puts a wrinkle in it. Could you elaborate just a little bit on that? Because if we grant the exemption, that's been given to him for the last 20-some years or whatever he stated. What does that, what does that do?
Well, probably Commissioner Morgan is more expert about taxes in an upcoming real estate transaction. But obviously, because the property has come back on the tax rolls, there was a bill that went out in December. Somebody's going to have to pay it. Whether that comes out of the-
Sell proceeds.
Sell proceeds to the church, or whether the new owner pays it on their own, I'm not sure we really care. But it's going to have to be paid, and I can understand that the parties may be in some discussion about who ought to have to pay it. So-
And do you know the amount of that?
Well, the value added was approximately, let's see, 601, 601,8, $601,800, multiplied by the consolidated rate of like 2.2 would get you your tax amount. Yeah, ballparking it. I think that's probably right.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Rogers?
Mike, thank you, Madam Chair. So trying to, the, the entity is a, the medical entity then, I'm assuming, whoever is a nonprofit, or is it a for-profit?
No. From my understanding, it's a for-profit. They have 20 other locations around the country.
Okay. So, Mike, with that sale, and if they would have bought it now, I'm assuming they would be responsible for the value of the property as of the end of December 30 anyway, the, the organization buying. If, if it was, if it would have been filed, they would have got it, and it would have been sold to a for-profit. They would have been on the tax rolls during the sale, and they would have been responsible for that.
Okay, yeah, let me, let me, let me sort through that. Commissioner, had these folks qualified for the exemption, had they applied timely in '22, the property would have been exempt to the end of the year. So essentially-
End of '23.
No.
No, to the end of '22. So there would have been no bill in December '22 to be paid in '23. The sale would take place, assuming it's a for-profit entity, then yes, that, we would, we would put a value on that property. They would get billed in December '23. The taxes would be due in '24.
Okay. So the seller is going to be responsible for this coming year, not this? That's how I'm hearing you saying?
Well, I think, I think, I think, I think the parties can work out where those tax dollars comes from, come from as they see fit. You know, I mean, I, I guess, I guess if I were the seller and I were buying a property that's come on the tax rolls that probably shouldn't have come on the tax rolls, I might be a little bit salty about picking up the tab on that.
I'm just, I'm just curious, because we've done some of this in the past. Is the thing that complicates this is the real estate transaction that's in the middle of?
Well, I think that's why, I think that's why Pastor Hall is here. You know, if, if there weren't, if, if the transaction had already occurred and this thing had been worked out between the buyer and seller, I'm not sure he would care, because they're going to own the property for not very much longer.
They're expecting me to pick up the entire tab, and I don't argue with them on that.
My point is, Mike, these have come in the past, and we've done, done them. Still, if we approve it, there's still some time. The state's got to prove this, right?
The state has the ability to review the grant of any exemption that a county board does. They have the ability to appeal such a grant to the Turk on their own. They seldom, I don't want to say they never, exercise those, that authority. You don't know if they are, or you don't know if they will or they won't. I mean, they've got like a 30-day window from the time the board decides to file such an appeal. They've done it in the past, and I know when I worked down there, I participated in at least a little bit of that. So I don't know in the end if they're gonna, if they're gonna pick up on, if, if you decide, well, gee, you know, this was just a, this was just an administrative mistake that the church made. We're going to grant him the exemption out of time anyway. Well, I don't know if they are going to, to make further issue out of this.
So, Madam Chair, my last point. If, so if we, if we do this like we usually do, we move to grant it to him, then I'm assuming there's some disclosure that would have to happen between the buyer and the seller to say, the Board of Equalization did this, it's subject, it could be appealed. If this is appealed, then they have to work that out.
I think that's, I think that's reasonable. Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Time. Commissioner Boyle, and then Commissioner Morgan.
Yeah, just to expand on what Commissioner Rogers is saying, if that, if that were the case, then that, that, that means that the purchaser, would it be the purchaser, purchaser, or the previous owners that would be involved in that transaction? It'd be the previous owner, correct? With the state, like the appeal and everything?
Well, if the, let's say, for example, the state takes, they say, you know, county board, granting an exemption six months out of time, that's, that's too much for us. We're going to take it down to the Turk. And let's assume they prevail for a minute. What would end up happening is it would reinstate the value here. There'd be a re-bill, probably. And, you know, since the, since the taxes tend to follow the property, I suspect the bill would get sent to the new owners. Now, would they want to pick up the ball and reach out to Mr. Hall and, or Pastor Hall and say, gee Pastor Hall, you know, we, we did this with the understanding that, you know, you guys would pick up the tab on the, on the tax bill. You know, I don't know how that transaction would go down.
So it really muddies the waters.
A little bit.
Yeah. Also, this is something, state law requires us to put forth these tax bills in the first place. So we're not disputing the fact that the tax has to be paid. It's just a matter of who's, who's doing it, it sounds like, more than anything.
Well, that seems to be the argument between Pastor Hall and his purchaser, yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Commissioner Morgan?
I'm just not sure, and I, I guess I'd yield to Teresa Urick. I'm not sure we have the ability to issue that because it's past the time.
Because you're way out of time.
Yeah, and then the next part of that would be, it would be the previous owner that would have that liability most likely for the last year, to pay those taxes out of the monies they received at the closing. Because if I'm buying it as of December, I'm not paying the taxes for the whole year while I didn't own it.
No, no, I understand that.
But I would yield if she'd be so kind to Teresa to tell us if we have the authorization to make that kind of decision.
Teresa Urick County Attorney's Office, the applicant is, is out of time, and there isn't a provision in the law that allows for you to go ahead and provide that. And then, as it works out between the purchaser and the seller, I think who pays the taxes, that's really between them. I agree with Mr. Goodwillie on that as well.
And that's what I thought, but I really respect your wisdom rather than mine. So I think probably a motion that, and I think, Mr. Goodwillie, you said you're not recommending that we do this. I don't think-
No, our recommend, our recommendation was, because the application was out of time, that they no longer qualify for 2022, and the application should be not denied, much in the manner that I've seen this board do with motor vehicles, where the organization applies out of time.
Therefore, I'd make the motion. It's a motion already. Okay, then that- A motion stands then. Okay, all right. And any other question, any other questions or comments from you, Mr. Pastor Hall?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And then, Mike, you said there was another issue on the resolutions?
Well, actually, it's the, I guess it's, it's it's treated separately, the two protests from St. Barnabas.
Okay.
But you could deal with the other resolutions prior to that.
Yeah, I have a motion on the floor in a second for the resolutions. Any other questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes, seven to zero.
Thank you for being here, Pastor Hall. And Mike can talk to you afterwards. Mike can talk to you afterwards.
Hang around?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we'll move to protests. We have two protests of CAC 22207. This is a permissive exemption for 3915 Davenport Street, not granted for 2022. The owner of the property is St. Barnabas Church. And Mike, do you have comments on this one?
I, I do, and I know there's somebody from St. Barnabas here. I spoke to him before the, before the meeting. This has a number of moving parts. It's a little bit more complicated than just a late file. But initially, this is another one of those where we got no application for 2022. And we sent the usual, you know, spate of letters, November, December, March, and June, to St. Barnabas, saying, for, for crying out loud, would you please file your exemption application? And none was forthcoming. So subsequently, value was put on both of those parcels, I think at the December 6th meeting, and that gave rise to the protest. The interesting thing about those letters is the board's notice on the value went to the same address that all the reminder letters went to. So I struggle with the notion that they would have gotten the value letter, but not any of the application reminder letters. So that's, that's the simplest issue. You've got somebody that's never filed an application for 2022, way out of time, and now there's, and now there's value on the property. But there are two sub-issues I wanted to make you aware of. One of them is that I'm not sure these properties would qualify in their entirety even had they filed on time. And the reason I say that is per the protest, Deacon Simmons, or Simons indicated that those duplexes are used for rental apartments, and the church does not really make any profit on the rentals, which says to me that they're probably breaking even or maybe just making a bit of money. If they were running into loss, I think they would have said they're running into loss. But the reason I raise this issue is, in previous applications, the organization has never mentioned that they do housing at that site, those sites. And the reason that's important is because there's a long line of state Supreme Court cases that stand for the proposition that when nonprofits run apartments at a break-even or better basis, that's not considered charitable or religious and doesn't qualify for an exemption. In fact, the most recent case was a few years ago in Sarpy County, involving apartments rented by the Sisters of Mercy. And they said to the, they said to the sisters, no, no, we, we think you're a landlord. We're going to, and we think you're taxable. So I guess the second issue here is, had they even filed, I'm not sure they would have qualified. There at least would have had to be some extended discussion and more information gathered about how the property's being used. And then the third issue is I'm not entirely sure what the appeal is. And the reason I say that is there was no application for '22 to be denied. What did happen was value is added to the property, and so what this, what this makes this appeal is technically a protest or an appeal of the value. Now, by state law, if you're appealing value, you have to state the reasons you're protesting the value, and you have to have an ask. And if you, meaning what you think the property should be valued at. If you don't, those protests by state law are subject to dismissal. I've looked at these protests a whole bunch of times, and I don't, I really don't see, I really don't see an ask. I don't see any, anything that addresses the valuation issue. So for all three of those reasons, we would recommend that the protest be dismissed. And I know there's a, I think Deacon Simons from St. Barnabas is here and would like to, would like to address you today.
Thank you. Would you like to come forward? And if you could just state your name for the record?
Deacon Simons. Just pick up, I guess. I, I'm not an expert in this. I'm an expert in other things.
You're fine.
But what I mentioned to Mike, and I don't know if everybody had a chance to read the, the letter I wrote, but my family and I moved here in late 2020 from out of state, not familiar with the process here, that sort of thing. And we moved here, I was just going to kind of be the deacon at the parish, small parish in midtown. I don't know if you're familiar with it, 40th and Dodge area. And it was just a month or two into our time here that things became apparent that there were big problems with our pastor. Financial mismanagement, just a lot of problems. And, and so things came to light. I got on the phone with our bishop and kind of explained that basically the parish was the Titanic going down. We were on the verge of insolvency, so on and so forth. At that point, in early 2021, our bishop was pretty decisive. He removed the priest. He put me in charge as administrator of the parish. But I was just like thrown into, and if I, I wish I had taken a picture of the priest's office. I mean, it was just like chaos. And so, yeah, I don't know, you know, in the meantime, as to, you know, my coming in, his chaos and all this, you know, various notices, that sort of thing. But basically, I'm pleading for mercy, is what I'm, I'm doing. And I understand if, if you don't want to grant mercy- And I understand if, if you don't want to grant mercy, that's well within your purview. But what I, you know, talking about the, a couple of things, making a profit, what I tried to explain in the letter is that, you know, these buildings are 122 years old. If you're familiar with that neighborhood, 40th and Dodge area, St. Barnabas, I would like to think, is kind of a stabilizing influence in the neighborhood. And we are trying to, you know, save money for reserves, for tuck pointing, roof maintenance, all these things to keep the properties up nicely for the neighborhood. And, you know, paying full boat taxes would make that a lot harder, to keep these properties up for the sake of the neighborhood. So the ask was kind of implied, I guess. I mean, again, I'm not familiar with the process. I didn't know that I had to, you know, state things in a certain way or whatever. But even if, you know, the apartment units running kind of break even are not eligible, the church stores stuff, and I, I could take any of you down. I could open it up and show you the church stuff that's stored in the basements. You know, basically like the church warehouse, if you will, I would hope would be, you know, qualify for some sort of tax exemption, that sort of thing. So I guess that, that would be my ask. I mean, just kind of pleading for whatever mercy we might, might be able to garner here. If it's even just reducing the property taxes by a third, you know, I'd be very grateful. You know, I know that, again, it would, it would help our small little parish in, in the neighborhood. So that's kind of where.
Okay, well, thank, thank you. We do have a couple of questions. Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Deacon, when, when, can you say again, when did you get to the parish?
My, my family and I moved into the parish October of 2020. I was placed in charge as administrator in the first quarter of 2021.
And you, you do now have a new pastor?
We have a new pastor now.
When did the new, Hilgendorf?
Hilgendorf, yes.
He, how long has he been there?
He came in July of 2021.
Okay.
And if, if I may, just to kind of, so I, I know this sounds like dog ate my homework, kind of lame stuff, but Father Hilgendorf was ordained, I want to say it was like June 30th or something. So, you know, fresh out of, you know, the, the manufacturing there. And so, over the course of, you know, the past year or so, we've been, he and I have been working together to right the ship and, and get stuff done right. And so, you know, I did apply, and, and actually, this is how this came to light for us, was I applied for the exemption now, you know, for, I guess it would be 2023. And I can't, it was in my letter, but one of the county employees reached out to me, and, and she was very gracious and said, hey, you know, you didn't apply for the previous year. And it's like, oh, wow, okay, well, let me do something. So, anyway.
Do you? Commissioner Morgan might follow up on the, and Mike might have mentioned it. I forget stuff or I don't listen very well. What, what's the value they're placing on the entire situation?
Yeah, yeah.
Each has a separate one.
It's 151,000.
I didn't, I didn't.
There's, Commissioner Friend, there are two buildings. One of them is at 152-6, and the other is at...
Got it.
151 even.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. I'm, I'm staring at it right now.
And let me, and let me touch on something else. I don't have any reason to doubt that the basement may be used for storage in that building. So perhaps worst-case scenario for this organization is had they filed and had they been forthright about how it's being used, you might have a partially taxable, partially exempt building, meaning the storage area exempt and the apartment's taxable. That's, that would have been a possibility, too.
No. My, I, I can't speak for everybody, of course, but my confusion lies in the, the, the loss of correspondence, right? What, what I'm wondering is, is there? How, so let me, let me say it this way. How long is that property being, has it been used to actually lease that space to individuals? To the best of your knowledge?
No, that's a good.
Like two, three, through four years?
I was gonna say, that's a good question. I, again, I, I don't have personal knowledge from the past, but my understanding, well, if, if anybody's familiar, I don't know, but there was a school that was located on our, our premises.
One minute?
I'm sorry?
Just one minute, his time. Go ahead.
Oh, and it was, I want to say it was, when I first visited the parish, it must have been 2019, it was the year before we moved, the school was using, it was really kind of goofy, but the school was using the duplex units as classrooms. It's like they'd use, you know, the bedroom and the living room, that sort of thing. And that was in 2019 that the school was, was using it.
Okay.
I don't, but when we moved in, in October of 2020, the units were rented to, as apartments. So at some point between 2019, 2020, that changed.
Okay, five seconds. So the point is, you had a tax exemption and this stuff was being used as a rental.
Time.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you very much. I appreciate what you're doing with the neighborhood right there across from Jocelyn.
Right.
The, the challenge is, I don't feel, again, it's similar to the last case as far as being able to do something like this, to make that exemption. Secondly, you're talking about taxes of somewhere around $7,800 total on the two properties, and they did have some rental income, so all of it wouldn't be exempt probably anyway because they're receiving some rental income.
If, if I may, Commissioner? What's, what's up today is a protest of the value that was set for the property in December. So, you know, there's no exemption application to deal with. What's present is a protest of the, the value, 152-6, I think for one, 151 for the other. So that would have to be what the discussion is about.
Right, but I was thinking part of it might have been able to be exempt because of their use of it in ownership. However, they, they had rental income.
Yeah, Commissioner, what we would have done is we would have asked a series of questions about the basis on which the apartments are rented. We also would have asked some questions about the amount of space being used for the church purposes, for the storage. And my suspicion is, we would have ended up saying, okay, these buildings ought to be partially exempt and partially taxable, that the storage space would be exempt, but that we would tax the apartments. Now, what, what percentage of that 151 or that 152-6 would have ended up exempt? I, I don't know. I mean, this, we'd have to ask more questions, but.
Yes, and probably will be doing that this year when the timing is right. Right now, I don't, I'm fairly certain we don't have the ability to change the value or we'd have people here every week if we're trying to change it at this late time. We can't do that. So, again, we have to, I think, honor, honor Mr. Goodwilly what you're suggesting, which is.
You would dismiss, you would dismiss the protest, is what you would do.
So I'd make that motion if it's appropriate, and I'm sorry to have to do that, but I've got to follow the statutes and know that we aren't really able to do anything different. And then you'll appear probably at, at the assessor's office to talk about this and get that done this year at the appropriate time, which will probably be in June.
Deacon, well, Deacon Simons, Commissioner Deacon Simons and I were talking before the meeting, and he was working his way through the applications. I think we may have to have a little bit more discussion about the duplexes. But yeah, we'll have a dialogue.
Yeah, thank you. I made the motion, yeah, to dismiss.
Okay, Commissioner Kavanaugh?
If that fits your schedule.
Okay, wait, there's more, more.
Just a couple of quick questions.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
So, I'm familiar with this property. I don't live that far away from it. Is this part of the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Omaha?
That's a good question. How much time you got? How much time does he have?
Well, just yes or no. It is or it isn't?
No, no, we're, we're part of the Ordinarity of the Church of St. Peter, which is Roman Catholic. But it's kind of like, if you're familiar with some of the Byzantine churches, that sort of thing. I know there's a Ruthenian community here in Omaha. We have a different bishop because we, we're Catholic, but we have different traditions coming from the Anglican tradition. And so our bishop is a Catholic bishop. He was actually just at the, the Requiem Mass for the late Pope Benedict XVI in Rome. But our property is not associated with the archdiocese.
Okay, so your bishop is who?
Bishop Stephen Lopes. Our cathedral is in Houston, yeah.
And it indicates in the records here that St. Barnabas has been in the neighborhood since 1915?
Yes, so, yeah, because St. Barnabas actually was founded in 1869, somewhere not too far from here, as a high church Anglican, not Catholic, Anglo-Catholic parish in 1869. I believe our building is the third building that the parish has been in. This building was built in 1915. And the parish came into the Catholic Church in, it was about, I'm trying to think, 2016, maybe, something like that. I wasn't here, so I, I don't remember, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you have a parish priest?
Yes, yeah, Father Hilgendorf, he's, he's actually half-time. I mean, again, our finances are such that we can't afford a priest full-time. So Father Hilgendorf is half-time at St. Barnabas and half-time at Christ the King with the archdiocese as an employee of the archdiocese.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Anybody's welcome to join us anytime.
Oh, thank you, thank you. But unfortunately, I think we're, we're kind of stuck here at this juncture. And there's been a motion, and I'm going to put J and K together since we've talked about them together. So the motion, if, if you are okay and the seconders okay, that it is to dismiss 3915 Davenport protest and 3919 Davenport protest.
Very good.
And we do not have need for an executive session. Could that include adjournment?
Yes.
So there was a motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers, to dismiss J and K and adjourn. Okay, no further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And thank both of you for being here with us today. We will move on. The agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections, we've been asked that this be held off until next month. And so we're, we're just going to, oh, no, just the two are. Oh, the, just the two are. Oh, I misunderstood. Scratch that comment. We will move forward with the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Corrections. Row call, please.
Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan. Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Present. Item one, approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, December 13th, 2022. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Friend. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll move to citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Corrections about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move to the report from our Director of Corrections. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Commissioners. Michael Myers, Director of Corrections. Director of Corrections for Douglas County. You have before you my.
That's not gonna work. We're not picking you up.
Okay. I'll do this. You have before you my report for December of 2022. Sixth month of the fiscal year. We are $2,787,232 under budget. We do have some major renovation and safety projects which have been delayed due to delays in materials. Those have begun, so I do expect that surplus to shrink over the course of the balance of our fiscal year. There were $738,150 spent on overtime costs in December. This was similar to the previous month. However, we do anticipate that this will be improving soon with improved staffing that I'll get to in a little bit. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and Reentry Services. The Sanction Center and Transitional Discharge Center placed a total of six individuals in Community Corrections and saved 23 bed days. Face-to-face family visitation removed, or excuse me, resumed for Community Corrections clients. Work release admitted six individuals. House arrest admitted 56 individuals. And the Reentry Assistance Program, or RAP, admitted 11 individuals. 100 individuals were re, were admitted to the therapeutic community housing units in the jail, and three individuals achieved a GED. Pretrial services, we are still working patiently with our vendor to integrate some data systems, so we will be able to provide you more robust reporting on our new pretrial release supervision program. However, for now, I can tell you that we placed 114 individuals on pretrial release. Over the course of the month, 499 individuals participated in 24/7 sobriety as a condition of pretrial release, and 93 individuals were supervised utilizing GPS monitors as a condition of pretrial release. Enclosure number three, compliance. Our regular documentation is being collected for all of our compliance processes, and we are entering the final year of our ACA audit cycle. That's a three-year accreditation, and we'll be up for an audit again this fall for both the jail and Community Corrections. Enclosure number four, personnel. Eight officers below the rank of sergeant left employment in December. This includes the retirement of Officer Lori Barnhouse, who provided more than 20 years of service to Douglas County. We wish Lori a happy and healthy retirement. Only one, however, of the voluntary departures occurred after the new FOP contract was approved. Five officers graduated from the Training Academy on December 9th. We are continuing accelerated training and overlapping field training. This change allows us to complete academy classes every four weeks instead of six. Seven new officers began the Training Academy on December 12th, and they did, in fact, graduate last Friday on January 6th. Eight officers began training yesterday. And I do want to say we've had a tremendous spike in applicants since the announcement of the contract. Even before we've begun advertising, we probably had more applicants in the previous, the subsequent two weeks from that being approved than we had in the previous four or five months at least. I believe we had 90 applicants in the first two weeks. Enclosure number five, population. There was 1,160 admissions. That's a decrease from the previous month. Releases were 1,166. That's also a decrease. Our high count was 1,074, and our low count was 979. Our average daily population was 1,033. That was a decrease of 32. Again, we've been trending downward over the past couple of months. Custodial bed sanction days were 93. That was basically unchanged. The US Marshal population increased. The felony pretrial population decreased. The misdemeanor pretrial population decreased. Probation violations decreased. 19% of our population were between the ages of 18 and 24. 67% of our population were minorities. 14% of our population were female, and 19% of our population were homeless or nearly homeless. Enclosure number six, medical. There were 953 intake screenings, and there were 312 health and physical assessments. Inmates were sent out 27 times for emergent medical care. 11 of those were by 911. There were four hospital admissions, which resulted in 13 days of hospitalization. And there were 57 off-site specialty medical appointments during the month. And I did want to point out, as a result of the vigilance and quick actions of our admissions staff as well as our medical team, they identified an individual who was in the process of being booked in, who was still in law enforcement custody, who appeared to be in physical distress. They assessed him and immediately recommended that he go out via ambulance to a local hospital. We subsequently learned that he had life-saving brain surgery for a bleed that happened later that day. So I'll be bringing the folks in front of you who made that decision and saved a life, hopefully by the next board report. Enclosure number seven, mental health. There were 110 initial psychiatric assessments. There were four initial mental health assessments. There were 127 mental health infirmary placements. And Commissioners, just a reminder, those are basically all suicide watches. There were 178 individuals placed on drug and alcohol withdrawal protocols. There were seven Board of Mental Health referrals and one transfer to long-term psychiatric facility. In other noteworthy items, and this will be the last time that I have this COVID report to you, as I have for the last couple of years, due to changes that we've recently made in consultation with Dr. Hughes and changes with county policy, civil service policy as well. We will still be, I'll still be providing some data. It just won't be quite as much as this. We did have zero known cases of COVID-19 among the incarcerated population. However, nine staff members did test positive. Our staff vaccination rate remains at approximately 75%. During December, we administered 40 first doses of Moderna, eight second doses of Moderna, and 40 booster doses of Moderna. And separately, at Community Corrections, we administered, through the Douglas County Health Department, 14 second doses of Moderna. And we are going to continue vaccination clinics. That will be an ongoing thing. As of January 1st, we have fully vaccinated 1,964 incarcerated individuals and provided boosters to 478. We continue educational campaigns to encourage our staff as well as our inmates to receive the Omicron-specific COVID vaccine as well as annual influenza vaccines. Our safety enhancement project began in December and will continue throughout much of 2023. When concluded, all housing units with a top tier will have state safety netting installed. Most of the top bunks and self-housing units will be replaced with improved models that we also believe will enhance inmate safety. And I want to conclude with a heartfelt thank you. We have developed, especially within the last year, and we continue to implement more resources for our staff to keep them safe, to try and keep them physically and mentally healthy, and to show our gratitude and appreciation for the service that they provide. The challenge, however, faced by being short-staffed has had a limiting impact on the effectiveness of those efforts. Our correctional officers have worked many long hours to keep our department as well as the citizens of Douglas County safe. Coming to an agreement on a new wage package was critical for our continued mission of public safety. I wish to thank Diane Carlson and Marcos Sanmartín and Patrick Bloomingdale for their guidance throughout the complicated negotiation process. I want to thank Amber Redmond and Debbie Otwell of my leadership team for spending countless hours on research and data gathering. And I wish to thank the leadership of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 8 for the willingness to listen and engage in some creative problem solving, along with their membership for overwhelmingly approving the agreement. And finally, I want to thank you, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners as representatives of the citizens of this county, for your continued unwavering support of the Department of Corrections and our public safety mission. And with that, I'm ready for your questions.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. Thanks for this. Mike, just as a side, there don't appear to be any numbers on these pages, so I'll go along as best I can with giving you the attachment things, and then you can find them inside those, I guess. Going to the staffing question, the authorized staffing levels are currently 494, with on-hand staff of 416 or 84.6%. That doesn't seem to have changed much. The corrections officers, one, the largest component of that, authorized at 349, and on-hand is 281, seems to have gone down since last month. Is that right?
Maybe slightly. We've basically been treading water with our staffing levels over the past few months with the accelerated trainings and so forth that we've done. I am, we have been interviewing basically six days a week all day long.
Sure. And that's at 80 and a half percent.
Correct.
So that's down from last month, but I understand you anticipating a turnaround on that. The numbers that you gave us at the top of that regarding people who came on and people who left, it seemed that five officers, or eight officers left in December, five graduated December 9th, and then, did you say, seven graduated on January 6th?
Correct. So those seven, well, yeah, they would be counted in this total, actually.
So it's like eight out, 12 on.
Correct.
Basically, on those numbers.
Yep.
But those last ones, those seven graduates, are not reflected in these numbers?
Actually, they should be because they started their training in December.
Oh, I see. So they would be part of this 281 corrections officer one number? Okay. On the demographics, again, I don't have page numbers because there are none on this report. It might be good, I think in the past I have them.
For some reason, mine has page numbers, Commissioner, so I apologize.
It's in Section 5.
Yep.
There's none on this. Sorry. There's none on this one. So the demographics, again, show an overwhelming majority-minority population with the African-American population leading at 46.32%, followed by the white population at 33.04, Hispanic at 14.23, Native American at 3.56, Asian at 1.77, and the others at under 1%. That seems to have crawled up again a little bit month to month. Is that right?
Slightly. I mean, it has slightly. And I, Commissioners, I'm going to continue to watch our new pretrial program numbers very carefully. And, you know, it's a little too early for me to make any judgments over something that's been in existence for a couple of months.
Can you speak up a little?
Yes. I want to say I'm going to continue to watch our new pretrial numbers very carefully. It's a little too soon to make any assertions yet. But it's my hope that that program starts to level the playing field a little bit better.
That would be great. And if you could make a point of highlighting that for us going forward, that'd be of great interest, I think, to see the impact of these programs that are just coming online.
Absolutely.
Finally, on the mental health component, it indicates that, this is, I think, in six, that there were some diagnoses here. This is the first, second, third, fourth page. Mental health diagnosis percentage, November 2022. Inmates diagnosed with mental illness is 874. Now, we have an average daily population here of, I think, just over 1,000, 1,033.
Yeah, so that 874 is the cumulative number of people present throughout the month. That's not an average daily number. Just below that, you see the average percentage of inmates with mental illness was 41%. So if you recall, we had a little over, like around 1,160 people admitted. We also had about 1,160 people released. And so you have to put both those numbers together to get the percentage.
Go ahead, keep going.
Yeah, on that page, there are three basic numbers down at the bottom. Inmates diagnosed with mental illness, 874. But that's cumulative number of the month.
Correct. So the cumulative population for the month, the number of people, of number of different people who spent at least one day in jail was 2,124, the number right above that. 874 of those 2,100 had, were diagnosed with a mental illness, which gets you the percentage of 41%.
Okay. So it's, the line right below that is total mental health diagnosis, 1,784. Are you seeing the same number that I'm seeing?
I may be looking at a different chart, but I can explain it.
The chart is mental health diagnostic percentages, November 2022. Looks like this.
Yep. So that, we were on two different charts. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Yeah, if the pages had numbers on it, this would be a lot easier.
The, yes, a lot of, there are oftentimes more than one diagnosis per individual. So that explains why that number of 1,784 is bigger than the number of 874.
So the line right below that, average diagnosis per inmate, 2.04.
Correct.
So of this whole population, each inmate has a couple of diagnoses? Am I reading that correctly?
Of those who have a diagnosis.
Oh, I see. Average diagnosis per inmate who was diagnosed.
Correct.
Not the total population.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Thank you. If you go back to enclosure six, and this deals with some mental health issues as well, on the third page of enclosure six, it begins with the heading, "DC/DC Mental Health Indicators." Do you see the graph I'm talking about?
Yes.
Okay. Just an informational question, because the graph has, the vertical calibration starts at 0, 500, 1,000, 1,500, 2,000, 2,500. And the total diagnoses appears to come in, and this is January of 2020, I guess, somewhere between 1,000 and 1,500, and then peaks out at somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000 in August. But then it goes into total diagnosis with mental illness. What's the difference between total diagnosis and total diagnosis with mental illness?
Basically, this is highly similar to the previous pie chart that you were looking at a few pages further up. This is the total number. So if you took the red bar and multiplied it by the, like, the 2.04 diagnoses per inmate, then you would get the blue bar. So the red is, the red is people, and the blue is, of those people, how many different diagnoses do they have?
Okay. The following chart, DC/DC Mental Health Diagnosis, has an asterisk, says an individual may have more than one diagnosis. I don't know if on yours, the, below the color code.
This didn't print out correctly, Commissioner. I see that.
Yeah, I was going to ask, what is that?
I'll, I will make sure that we send you electronically. As I'm looking at this, I can see that when the copies were printed, it didn't print.
One minute.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. No other questions or comments? Again, the tour we will put up until next month, but thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner.
With that, do we have a motion to adjourn out of the Board of Corrections and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners? Motion by Commissioner Morgan, seconded by Commissioner Rogers. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
And can we start off with a row call for Board of Commissioners, please?
Yes, Commissioner Boyle.
Here.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yeah.
Commissioner Friend.
Yeah.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Morgan.
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers.
Here.
Madam Chair.
Present. Item A, approval of the minutes of Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, December 20th, 2022. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, January 17th, 2023, and approval of resolution authorizing the clerk, comptroller to make certain payments if a county board meeting is canceled during calendar year 2023. Is there a motion to approve A, B, and C? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next is our consent agenda. Items A through L. There are a couple of items, E, F, and G. Those will be held over for two weeks. Otherwise, all remain on the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve A through L minus E, F, and G? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Any questions or comments? Please vote.
One moment, please. Okay, thank you. Motion passes seven to zero.
Next, we have one recognition, and this is recognizing Chief Deputy Wayne Hudson, who worked for the Douglas County Sheriff's Department for a total of 28 years. There he is. Today, we want to congratulate him on his retirement, recognize him for the dedication to the department as well as to the citizens of Douglas County. Wish him the bestest of luck on his new position, and hopefully you will enjoy your new role, but not forget us and stay in touch. Again, 28 years of a great, dedicated servant to Douglas County. We thank you for your service. We thank you for your service, Chief Deputy Hudson. And I would ask for a motion to approve. Motion by Commissioner Morgan, second by Commissioner Rogers. And at this time, I would invite anyone who would like to make some comments. And that includes you, Chief Deputy. Commissioner Rogers.
Wayne, in the pardon, just, uh, thank you for the service, I would say, not only at Douglas County, but also through Noble. We can talk Divine Nine. We can talk other things of church. So I hate to see you go, but definitely understand it, and it looks like a great opportunity. Hope is you keep your house here, and you might think about returning after you serve your term there. But I just, I want to, not only for me, but I know I'm speaking for a lot of the other Greeks out there that have worked with you along the way. And thank you for everything and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Friend?
Chief, I'm wondering, my college roommate lives in the community you're going to be in. He, do you golf?
No, I don't, but I can drive the golf cart.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that he's going to want that. Not the chief of police. Wayne, good luck with everything, and thanks for your service.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes, briefly, Chief Deputy Hudson and everyone else. I just want to kind of highlight the integrity that Wayne started with and the kind of public servant that I really admire, is one that always has a genuine heart for the community, is always looking to serve others and do it with humility and, again, integrity. And Wayne, you encompass all that and much more. So I just want to thank you for your service here in Douglas County. 28 years is a good chunk of time, and we were blessed to have you here for that chunk of time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Thank you. I'd just like to add my congratulations to you, Chief, for your many years of dedicated public service and a personal shout-out to you on your stellar career serving the people of Douglas County. We're going to miss you, and I hope you come back to us. Stay well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle?
And I want to reiterate everything everybody else said too, but I also appreciate your willingness to educate me as a newer commissioner. When I had questions on things, you supplied me with the information I needed to make good decisions for Douglas County. And I hope you remember to continue to do that for the folks in your new position. So congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Wayne, congratulations to you.
And also thank you for your service, and I look forward to seeing you when Nebraska plays Ohio State, and you'll have on a red shirt, I'm sure. So, and if you need that, I can send you one. You take care and look forward to seeing you.
Thank you very much.
And Chief, comments? Before you make your comments, you're my kind of golfer. I drive karts, too.
Well, Commissioners, I want to say this, you know, it was a long run. I started that department as a reserve deputy back in 1994. And looking back at it, I have no regrets. I had a really long career. I had an inspiring career. The community accepted me with my community service, my community engagement, and that's something that I'm hoping to bring here in Shakira Heights, Ohio. We have a wonderful community there. We do. Do we have problems? Yes, like every other community. But what we also have is we have people that are willing to sit down and solve those problems. And this board has always shown that they've always been willing to sit down and tackle the hard problems. So I thank that community. I hope to be an inspiration to the youth there. Those individuals that come from the same neighborhoods that I came from, they, what they will call the challenged communities, let them know that we are bigger than the communities that we are growing up in. The schools that we attend are who our parents are. We can strive. We can do better. If we all, we had breaks in life, we study hard, and with God behind us, we can do it. Thank you. I appreciate what the board has done. I wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for Douglas County and the community service I put into that community. So thank you.
Well, again, thank you and best of luck to you, Chief.
Thank you.
With that, please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Next are citizen comments. Anyone wishing to speak to the Board of Commissioners about an item not on the agenda? Seeing none. In committees, we have our budget report as presented. We have our weekly personnel under human resources. That report from civil service as presented. Legislative issues, we are monitoring the introduction of bills, and we will report out on January 23rd on those bills. And we do have a community services committee at 1 today. We do not have need for an executive session. Oh, the meeting is in Room 903, the Community Services Committee. We do not have a meeting on January 16th in observance of Martin Luther King Jr. Day. And our board will not meet on January 17th, 2023. So our next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, January 24th, 2023. And then lastly, we do have a Douglas County Planning Commission meeting, monthly meeting, Wednesday, January 18th at 6:00 PM out at the Fitzgerald Office Building on 153rd and Maple. So before we adjourn, I see Commissioner Morgan has a comment.
Well, I just want to thank both you and Chris for your service last year as chairman and vice chairman, and wish you the best again this year, hurting all of us in your efforts. And also, we have a new face sitting next to Joe Lorenz, Lori Persch, and I thought it'd be nice to introduce her and welcome her. And we look forward to working with you and the challenges ahead. And at least you have a great mentor there with Joe Lorenz. He's one outstanding individual. So thanks for joining us.
Help me get warmed up and learn the ropes.
Great.
I would like to welcome you as well, and also, oh, he left. But we also, all of our new elected officials to Douglas County, would like to welcome them and look forward to working with everyone in this coming year. So again, we do not have need for executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Rogers, second by Commissioner Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero. We're adjourned at 10:18 AM.